To order the, or the, yeah, the work session, don't order. And um, do we want to do it in this order?
Certainly can.
It's okay?
Yeah.
The request of solid waste and recycling reimbursement. I, I, you know, I see he's not here, so does that matter?
Uh, well.
Was he planning on coming?
Um, they were called. I don't know what the answer was on that phone call.
Okay.
Um, but basically what this is, is they are requesting, they only have four units that they are using. Is a four unit rental. We looked into the rental records, it is accurate, and they've been being charged for five.
Is that clear back to two thousand nine?
Uh, for a very long time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, are we funding all the way back?
Well, I think, I believe, according to John, that, uh, you know, when we are error accidentally of like that, that is the statute, two years, correct? So, we'd be looking, if council would be interested in a two-year refund.
Which one is it?
I'm not sure, because I'd have to go back and figure out, um, what the old rates were.
But, cause it would just be like the monthly minimum.
Yeah, yeah.
But roughly, what, ten dollars a month?
Well, no, it'd be trash and recycling, so you're looking at, what was that before, like eighteen, nineteen dollars?
Each unit?
No, they're just looking for one unit.
I know, but is that what you charge for every unit?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, each one.
Well, we could go back to two thousand nine if we wanted to.
I'm not sure. I can't answer that.
Fifty bucks at nine, nineteen dollars.
For how long? That's two years.
For two years.
So it's about?
Roughly.
What do you got there?
Four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Probably what we would ask if we would credit their account.
Instead of looking at all the old numbers, why don't we just cut a deal and do them, set them out, like a thousand dollars and call it done? Save all that work. It's not really worth it.
I'd agree with that. It's not worth your time.
Okay, well, anybody else have any thoughts? On that, if not, we'll just, do you want to say something, Tom?
If, if we go back two years, if it's roughly eighteen and twelve, it's thirty bucks a month, right? Which would be three sixty years, seven twenty for two years. Do we want to just ballpark it at that, saying that we'll give them the current rate for the past two years? Even though that's probably a little more than they paid, but it still covers the two-year.
And seven hundred and twenty.
Seven hundred and twenty, yeah.
Yep.
Seven twenty?
Thank you, man.
Well, we'll let, we'll let you make that motion during council.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, does it have a tone with that or not? Is that all right, okay? All right, I'll make the motion.
Yeah, that seems like a reasonable thing. Makes it easier. Nobody has to spend two or three hours on that. Okay, so let's move on to, uh, number two. A notification alternatives report. Uh, Shelby, you have the floor.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Um, so each of you should have a packet, has a memo on the front. And I'm gonna be going over two options that can improve the communication, uh, with Fairfield residents and promote greater transparency. Uh, over the last year, we've seen a growing interest from residents in getting updates more quickly and having a simple way to stay informed. Uh, effective communication will reduce misinformation, strengthen community trust, and streamline our processes to ensure all information is getting out. Uh, the vendors I have, sorry, I say a lot. I'm not much of a public speaker, so I apologize. And the vendors that I have are Aptigie and Civic Send. Civic Send is a module of Civic Plus, so that is our current provider. And both of these would provide the necessary tools to enable city staff to approve in these areas. Uh, but there are some differences in pricing and features. The main difference that I wanted to point out is that Civic Plus would be an add-on to what we currently have, whereas Aptigie would be a complete transition. And so in this packet.
Yeah, of course. Uh, would we switch our website to Aptigie then?
If that's the decision that council wanted to make, it would be a complete transition.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Um, in the packet, on page two and three, it's just a little side-by-side comparison that I made. That's how my brain works, I like seeing things next to each other for a comparison. But I'll run through all the key points with you guys, uh, instead of reading through all of this. Um, if you go to the next page, Jason, Aptigie has put together like a mock-up of their vision for the city website. Their handout includes all of the key features, and you can tell that it's personalized. So they got our colors, looked at our current website, and wanted to put that together for us. Aptigie is an all-in-one communication platform. It was originally made for school districts, but it has been branching out to municipalities. I have been told that municipal-specific tools should be available here in the future. I don't know when. Uh, the school district currently uses Aptigie. Most feedback has been positive. Uh, the most common complaint being cost. They're, they have a ninety-eight percent client retention rate, but they have lost municipalities due to the cost of it. Key features I want to point out is Aptigie includes a mobile app. Um, it is, uh, one-click posting to website, social media, email and text notifications, phone calls, and app notifications. App notifications being like, when something's posted, it'll pop up on your phone saying "City of Fairfielder", however it's labeled in the phone. Um, they get a lot of really positive reviews on the user-friendly interface, and they have really strong customer support. It is ADA compliant. Um, the allow, the app would allow those push notifications to go straight through, um, versus relying on a text or phone call. Um, with Aptigie, we would be able to sign people up with contact information that we have from utility billing, so that would take away some of the responsibility of having to go and sign up. Um, and so far, we have discounted implementation fees, um, through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. So on the quote, which is right after this little mock-up, um, the implementation fees show, I think it's um, half of what it normally would be, which is ten thousand, so it's five thousand, and that is good through December thirty-first. I have spoken with the gal from Aptigie quite a bit, or me and Doug both have, and she did mention during our last meeting that if it comes down to purely budgetary concerns, that they're willing to work with us. I don't know what that would look like, or what kind of discounting that would be, but, um, I did want to mention that she said that, so. Some considerations with Aptigie is, like I said, we would do a complete merge. Transitioning and downtime will, can take three to four months. Um, that is subject to fluctuate depending on their availability, but, uh, very average time span is three to four months.
You're saying the website would be down totally?
Well, uh, the transition period, so from the start, cause that's another thing, we have paid for Civic Plus through September of next year. So, our current website isn't going anywhere, at least until then. Um, but the downtime transition period would be three to four months to switch over to start using it from the day of signing to launching.
So it wouldn't be down, it just?
No.
It wouldn't?
A transition period, I guess it'd probably be worded better instead of downtime.
So we started Aptigie in June, it'd be ready by the end of September when the other one, right?
Yeah.
Civic would go down and that one would come up?
Yeah. Um, like I said, we've already paid Civic Plus through, for services through September thirtieth of two thousand twenty-six. So that's just an additional loss that I think may need to be considered. We would have to look at other solutions for our online job applications, which could bring additional costs. Um, I did some very brief research on this, and it looks like a lot of the third-party places that you can go to do the online job applications are for organizations that have hundreds of job applications a month. I don't even know if we have hundreds in here, so I don't know if this is something that we would even want to consider, um, how that would look, but we would have to find another solution for that. Customers would have to download the app if they wanted those, uh, notifications directly to their phone. So I guess if they really want the information, they'll download it, but it's something to consider, that they would have to be responsible for downloading that. And then, my last consideration for that is staff training. We would have to train and learn new tools, um, along with coordinating a transition. Um, before I go on with Civic Send, are there any questions about Aptigie specifically?
So, we talked about all the different types of notices they would get, they would all come through the same tunnel, so speak, right?
Yeah, depending on what they've signed up for. So, um, what we could do is we could input like phone numbers for people to get text and call notifications. Um, but as far as downloading the app, um, they would have to go and sign up for what they want. So if they only want city council updates, they can get those. If they only want, um, water department, you know, water main break, they can sign up for that specifically, but it would all be through the same avenue.
Okay.
Which one involves more time for you guys to manage? Do you know? Do you, do you think you know?
There, it's very similar, as far as logging into the, uh, like the admin side of the website. And I did the tutorial for the Civic Send, cause on the website, you can do like a click tutorial, it tells you where to click. Um, and I've done the Aptigie one, very similar. You go in, you put in the message, you checkmark the boxes, like I want this on Facebook website, and a text notification. As far as timing, sending out notifications, I think it's probably about the same, but I'm not sure what all goes into like the website design portion of it, like what all we would need to do, um, differently, so I'm, what I'm thinking is like training, obviously with a new system would
Right.
be more time-consuming, but
Right.
once everything's settled, I don't think that there's too much of a difference.
So after setup, it's, you think it's fairly, okay.
Okay, I'll go on. Uh, Civic Send is a module provided by Civic Plus. It's a tool specific for alert notifications and newsletters. It has, uh, similar features to Aptigie, but it excludes the push notifications from an app, and the phone call notifications. So with Civic Send, it is ADA compliant in the sense where if you require like voice-to-text, you can do that, but it won't do the phone calls like Aptigie does. Uh, like the school district will do phone calls when school's been canceled. That is in another module with Civic Plus, but given what we would use it for, I don't necessarily know if phone call notifications are necessary, but it would, um, affect people who, you know, have landlines or want those type of notifications. Key features of Aptigie is that it is our, sorry, I'm still in Aptigie. Civic Send, the key features, it is more cost-effective, and it's less complicated than a complete transition. It has the same one-click posting to the website, social media, email and text notifications. It's familiar for staff, and it will integrate with our current website. Uh, we would be able to utilize tools that we have already paid for and implement it quickly without any type of transition. Uh, when I spoke to them about Civic Send, the minute we said, I think they said that we'd be able to get it up and running in a week or two. It is also ADA compliant. Uh, Civic Send by Civic Plus, it is designed for government entities, so it makes the modules and tools more functional for our organization. So it, you know, it's just more tailored to fit government versus Aptigie's made for school districts. And after speaking with them, they have offered to waive the implementation costs as well. Uh, some considerations with the Civic Send is there is no app included. It would eliminate that option for the notification, the push notifications.
Just a second.
Yeah.
It says here it could be added.
Yes, yep, um, an app is available for an additional cost, um, which would include the push notifications.
What's that cost?
I haven't met with anyone. That is what, one of my considerations for Civic Plus, is that every single tool and module has a separate person. Whereas with Aptigie, I've only been speaking to the one.
Oh, I see.
Um, with Civic Plus, I think I have spoke to three or four different people, just in regards to this. So when looking into the app, I haven't gotten a quote on it, but it would be an additional module. So another consideration is that it doesn't solve the website complaints. But we have also received quotes for a website redesign from Civic Plus, and we're currently working on some intermediate solutions to kind of fix things as we go. And we'll continue to do so. Uh, like I said, it doesn't include the phone calls. And each, yeah, I already said, each module tool has a different point of contact, so, um, as far as communicating with Civic Plus, it has been a little bit of a challenge, but, um, with Aptigie, it's been just the one person. So, in short, to summarize, Civic Send is the simpler and more affordable option. It fits easier, easily into what we already have. And it would be the best, or be the best fit if priorities budget, smooth transition, and utilizing the tools we already have. Um, Aptigie is a modern, extensive communication system, and includes mobile app of phone calls, but has a larger setup and higher cost. Um, this would be the best fit if priorities maximum reach, personalization, and branding. Yep, Mel has more to add. She's been my brain.
Well, no, Shelby, Shelby has done all the research, and, um, I was gonna call her at you. So if you don't know Shelby, Shelby, uh, works, well, her, for about three more days, her desk is in the front office. Um, she is moving into where my office has been, and, um, she keeps me in line, um, so we kind of help each other back and forth. Uh, but she has been doing a lot of the website and, uh, social media lately, so, um, she has worked with Doug on a lot of this. So I want to talk about the cost, or I guess a recommendation. As Shelby mentioned, we have paid for the Civic Plus website through September of this year. Um, it has an annual cost of, um, two thousand six hundred-ish dollars. It goes up four percent each year. And so the, um, cost of implementing the Civic Send, or the messaging portion, as she mentioned, is, can be implemented pretty much as soon as we have an opportunity to sit down with them and talk about the structuring. They also agreed to waive the implementation cost of seven hundred and fifty dollars, and, um, the, so the cost, the annual cost of Civic Send is another two hu, two thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars, but, um, is pro-rated based off of when we signed, so what we would need to put forward as, I'm gonna say cash, in order to get this started, is just under two thousand dollars. Which is great. As she also mentioned, that this doesn't solve our website problems, um, website concerns, um, but they have given a quote for, uh, around nine thousand dollars to do the website redesign. Adding those two together, we are looking at, why do I have that number? Did I add that correctly? So we are, so yeah, we're looking at, uh, ten thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars um, in order to get Civic Send out, up and running, and, um, start a website redesign, or to do a complete website redesign. Um, that's our recommendation, um, as staff, talking, uh, Rebecca, Doug, myself, Shelby, and, um, in addition to that, um, as Terry mentioned, she loves it when we bring solutions as well. Uh, so we already have six thousand dollars, uh, budgeted in this fiscal year for an app, so that leaves four thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars to find. Um, our recommendation is to take that from the planning department. Uh, we, as you know, we're not, we don't have quite as much, um, salary that we are expending this year, and a significant portion of the redesign is going to help the planning and zoning department, because we need a lot of redesign on that portion. I mean, we have a lot of forms that people need to access, that they have trouble finding, and, um, the redesign will help that. So that is our recommendation, is to, um, take that additional four thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars from the planning department. You know, why do a redesign now if you move forward with the Civic Send? The rec center just went through a redesign, um, went well, there were some bumps, but, um, we know that it can be done with, uh, not a lot, not a lot of downtime. I think having the redesign and staying with Civic Plus will allow us to function with other city, um, similar to other cities as we, um, decide how we're moving forward with code compliance officer, um, and planning and zoning, that makes it easier for any of those positions to transition, because our website functions, as we talk about building codes, expanding housing, any of these things that the community is working on, it allows our website to look and look, function more like other cities. I mean, we can still make it look like ours, but function more like other cities. Um, so I think with just everything that we have going on, um, in addition to pulling the trigger on the Civic Send, which is important on getting the information out, now is a good time to do that redesign, um, and get some of that stuff formatted. Lastly, I think the Civic Send, um, doing it with the text messages rather than an app is a great solution. One of your concerns early on was the app fatigue. EMA is still working on theirs, I've heard rumors that maybe Jefferson County is working on a separate one. Um, and so this allows us to continue with the software that we have, and not burden people with another app. We, if, if we do the redesign and the Civic Send, and things go great, and people still want more, we can add, they call it an à la carte method. We can add an app, we can add a chat GPT bot to our website, so we can continue to add additional features. But just for this really basic cost of ten thousand eight hundred dollars, we can start in a direction, um, and then move forward, um, with those additional things. As we get this first, um, you know, what do they say, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time, we're gonna take that first bite, get the redesign and Civic Send done, and then continue to, uh, look at other features from there. So that's our recommendation from staff, and Shelby, and we, um, can't answer any additional questions on Civic Send or Aptigie.
So can you explain the different modules? I'm confused.
Yeah, so like Melanie said, they have what they call an à la carte method. So when you purchase Aptigie, you get all the tools regardless, you get everything.
I'm talking about Civic Plus, is that the one that?
Yep, I'm sorry, I was just making the comparison. So with Civic Plus, they have all of the same tools available, but you pick and choose what you want. So the modules just being, um, like the, for this, for notifications, there's a module for calendar, there's a module, you know.
So is that, when she says features, you're talking about the same thing?
Yeah, features, modules, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And some, some of them, like the calendar is standard, um, the meetings and agendas are standard, but the chat GPT bot, um.
Those are add-ons.
Reserva, paying online, some of the things actually that, um, the pay, paying online and reservations is something that is a module that the rec center added on.
So how, how's that going to impact, you think, support? If, I mean, you told me you had trouble getting ahold of somebody to talk about the app, and you talked to different people on different aspects of it, is that gonna be a problem in regard to support from the company?
Um, I would assume the support is similar to what we use for like billing software. When you submit a ticket, it goes to the person who needs it. And for Civic Plus, they have online, like how-to help articles, and that's actually how I found like the click-through tutorial for this module, cause we don't have it, so I can't look at it or explore, but going on their website, it's a full-screen, like circle click here, and it essentially just walks you through it, so. And it is a system that we're pretty familiar with. I, in the three years I've been here, I've never had to reach out for customer support. So that side of it is pretty good, but I think between the online articles of self-help, and even like the click-through tutorials, I didn't have any concerns with it, but I can't speak for everyone, so.
Are there, are there other applications that we aren't using, that we should be using?
Um, so, no, because before we really dived into this, we actually did a module audit, because I think there's a lot of tools on there that we currently aren't utilizing. Um, and there was only two modules that we didn't have. And that being the Civic Send and the Mass Notifications, I believe you. Which are, Mass Notifications is kind of similar, but it's more geared towards emergency alerts. And we, I don't think that would meet our needs, I think it's a little, um, extensive, but, yeah, we have the Agenda Center, we have quite a bit. But of course, the one that we need, we don't have.
And we, we have access to Agenda Center. I mean, one of the concerns that we've heard from people is the ease of accessing agen, um, past agendas and minutes, and, um, when they show us, you know, such and such city, they really like the way this looks. Those cities are using Agenda Center, and so, um, we have access to that. It would ju, uh, and we are hoping that the redesign will help us transition, or we can talk with them about transitioning from what we currently do to, um, the Agenda Center, uh, to make the past minutes and past agendas easier to access. So we currently already are paying for that module, we're not using it, um, cause it comes with the standard package. Another questions, council? Any thoughts, Doug, that you want to share?
Well, I can tell you that I have reached out to several other cities in Iowa. I thought that they didn't have, that Aptigie did not have any cities that were using Aptigie in the state, but there were two others, and they do like the apps. Most of them use, use Civic Plus, because like Shelby and Melanie have said, there's, they both have really great features, and that, you know, with Aptigie, they struggle with ordinances and what have you. And with Civic Plus, you know, they don't, they don't have the outreach that we're, we're looking for, and, you know, with phone calls, and, and they, they both have things that we want, and they both have things that we wish they had. So I, I, I think it's six and one half dozen and the other. I think that they would both serve us well, and I appreciate the research that, that Shelby's done. And I appreciate the research that, that Shelby's done. But I, I, I see, I, I agree with, with their assessment that, you know, with Aptogy, I call, I get an answer, somebody's talking to me and they're walking us through stuff. With Civic Plus, I'd, I've talked to three or four different people because everybody is specialized in something. I can tell you that with the Main Street presentation that, that we just had, that, you know, in this community, they're not really as tech savvy. Hence the, you know, the, the app fatigue that we may encounter and people start ignoring it. The one thing that I like about Aptogy is, is that, you know, we can just automatically sign people up and then they decline whether they want notifications or not. Civic Plus, I don't believe has that feature.
No, no, so Civic Plus, people would have to sign up.
So I can tell you that I've gone on our website and signed up for everything. And I don't know whether it's on our end that I don't get notifications that often or whether it's the fact that it's on Civic Plus's end that occasionally I get a notification of parks or, you know, water and sewer, whatever that may be. So really, it is up to the council's discretion of what, what, what matters most to them. And a website redesign is important and both of them are willing to do it.
How did Aptogy start? Do we know? What was its origins? What were they, what were they building for?
So, so the unique thing about Aptogy and going, they started out with school systems and Civic Plus had municipalities. That's how they both got their starts. And then as competitors would go, they started flip-flopping. And now Aptogy is heading in to municipalities and Civic Plus is heading into school systems. And so they're just competing that market, which is fair. That's what I would do if I was that smart, but I'm not. So they, you know, Aptogy is working on the municipal side of making sure that we do have Civic Send and those sorts of things that, that they're working on ordinances and they're working on organizing resolutions, but, but they're just not there yet. And it could be such a thing that we try to use these other tools with Civic Plus because we're also very budget conscious. That's another big key thing. Aptogy has said, hey, we're gonna work with you, we understand. I've had municipalities tell me that they've left Aptogy because of the cost, but the same thing that, that they've left Civic Plus because of the cost. So I, I, I mean, it's kind of a win-win or lose-lose situation. You're not gonna get everything. It's kinda like buying a house.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, well, it's seven oh three. Let's just take a two-minute break and we'll start the council meeting at seven oh five. Okay? I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Rebecca, please call the roll. Thompson?
Yeah.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandhi?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Yep, got a pencil? Okay, are there any changes, council, to the agenda? Anybody have anything? Hearing none, let's move on to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes on November tenth, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Approval of the November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five payroll in the amount of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. Acceptance of the library board minutes. Acceptance of property committee minutes of nine fifteen, ten thirteen, and eleven thirteen. Approval and employee appreciation celebration dinner, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-five. Approval of the August finance report. Approval of the September finance report. Approval of the urban, annual urban renewal report. Approval of the annual street finance report. Approval of the annual finance report. Approval of tax increment financing certifications. Resolution of seasonal employment in the streets department. Approval of liquor license for El Paso Tex-Mex Bar and Grill and Vino Del Mundo. Approval of total claims in the amount of one million, fifty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty cents. We had four claims, more than seventy-five thousand. Krisner contracting for the fire station, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixteen cents. EBS for our health premiums, eighty-one thousand, two seventy-three, eighty-seven. By excavating ink for Sunrise Trail, one hundred and ninety thousand, five twenty-four, sixty-eight. And waste management corporate services, eighty-two thousand, one eighty-one, seventy-six.
Move to approve consent agenda?
Second. Moved by Gandhi, second by Kness. Discussion?
Yeah, who is, resolution of seasonal employment in the street department? What role is that? What function is that person going to be undertaking?
I believe that is to help with the snow removal over the winter.
I see. All right. Thank you.
I did review the claims and everything seemed in order.
Okay, so we do have some of the annual reports. Does anybody have specific questions on any of those or? Ask one question, Rebecca would really. I know.
But make it easy because my brain's fried.
Yeah.
Well, the Tiff Districts are in the flag.
Yeah, yeah, they are. Good. Yep, that's good. All righty, so we do have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda and no other questions. Guess you can call the roll.
I would say I'd like to point out that Vino Del Mundo is a new business in town, so.
Yes, it is.
What?
Vino Del Mundo?
Yeah.
You wanna make yourself known?
What is that?
Ken Malloy.
Ah, Wine of the World.
Ken Malloy's new business.
Cool.
So good luck, we wish you lots of luck.
Yeah, we'll be on the west side of the square.
Great. All righty. Okay. Okay, go ahead and call the roll. Gandhi?
Yes.
Kness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Two Hill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great, that was approved. Consent agenda was approved unanimously. So under public forum and appearances, we have moved up this proclamation. Usually I do those in the mayor's report, but this is for Jonas Magrum and I didn't want him to sit through the whole meeting. So we've got him in the public forum appearances. And so, hey, Jonas, why don't you come up and talk about real quick when your next performance is and what you're raising money for this year?
Thank you. On December sixth, at the Golden Magnolia Sanctuary, at seven thirty PM, we're gonna have our thirtieth annual children's holiday benefit. The benefit, which attracts donations beyond the concert, has raised nearly four hundred thousand dollars over the last thirty years. This is our thirtieth, I don't know if I said that, but that's, that's it. Oh, who's benefiting?
Who are you benefiting this year?
Four orgs, CETA Community Action, the Women's Crisis Center in Atumwa that serves women here in Jefferson County, the Golden Magnolia Sanctuary Community Kitchen, and a quarter goes to an international organization, Save the Children.
Great, thank you. So here's the proclamation. Whereas the children's holiday benefit has been providing charitable support for children and families of Jefferson County since nineteen ninety-three. And whereas, in partnership with CETA Community Action, formerly Southern Iowa Economic Association, donations raised by the annual event have benefited many local and international charities. And whereas, the annual event has raised nearly four hundred thousand since it began. And whereas, this year's children's holiday benefit will support CETA Community Action, the Family Crisis Center of Atumwa, the Golden Magnolia Sanctuary Community Kitchen, and Save the Children. And whereas, the annual benefit has included a concert featuring many of the area's most talented performers, including Jonas Magrum, the benefits founder and organizer, and which has been supported by over two hundred generous donors and volunteers. And whereas, this year's concert will be held on Saturday, December sixth, at seven thirty PM at the Golden Magnolia Sanctuary in Fairfield and will include performers from Fairfield, Mount Pleasant, and Iowa City. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Connie Boyer, Mayor of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim December one through seven, Children's Holiday Benefit Week in Fairfield. Encourage all citizens to support the children's holiday benefit. Congratulations and thanks for your many years of service to our community and to the kids.
Thank you, thank you.
If you wanna step forward, you can, you can come get this. Because you have a copy, right?
Yes. Thank you.
All righty. So we hope you have a full house. Next, is Matt Welch here? Okay, go ahead, Matt. Come on up and tell us about the Power Wagon Rally for Twenty-Six.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This year, it's gonna be held like we tried to do the first full week of June. The main reason for being here tonight is for the parade on Saturday morning. Ten AM, we'll start at the fairgrounds, work our way towards the square. Be parked there for a few hours, have the truck show where people can meet the people from all over and see the trucks for a while and it's just a good time. So we'll, if we can, I'll get ahold of Joe down at the city and see if we can have the barricade set up the night before. And then we'll have everything removed and torn down by probably one, one thirty.
Great. Any questions, council? All right. Take a motion to approve what they normally do?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Kness?
Second.
Second by Two Hill. Any other questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, first weekend in June, what date is that?
June sixth, so we would set up the evening before, you know, the evening of the fifth, we'll block off the square and stuff. So that way, when we get up there in the morning, we can, we can have that open. So June sixth is the morning of the parade.
Thank you.
All righty. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, we hope it's another successful year.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for all your support. I appreciate it.
Yep. Mendy McAdams, I don't see her here, but there is a street closure request also for the.
Holiday lighting ceremony.
Holiday lighting ceremony, and I think it's the southern end, right? The southern portion of the square.
I move to approve.
Okay, moved by Kness to approve that closure? Second by Flornoy?
That would be Friday, November twenty-eighth. That's what she's asking for.
Yep, correct. Any other questions? Anybody have any questions about that? Pretty same, same, same thing every year. For the horses to go around, have rides. Okay, so all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Great, thank you. Next is Naomi Sunshine. And I asked her to come to City Hall and tell us about what you're doing.
Hi, thank you for having me. May I approach? The first QR code that I had apparently expired. If you wanna take a picture, the QR code will fly around past it. Thank you for having me. I moved here over the summer from Atlanta, Georgia. Fairfield called me, that's a whole separate story. I'm so glad to be here. We bought the building that owns the Istanbul Grill and I'm currently renovating the basement to be a donation-based community game room during the day for, for the majority of the hours that it, that will be open to bridge community generations and just to basically help everybody have a air-conditioned or heated place to enjoy themselves. And in the evening, for just a few hours, we'll do a speakeasy for some fun for the adults. And then upstairs, I'm making a temporary, temporary housing for women and children survivors of abuse and trauma. Everything we do is really to support them. We have forward-facing, for-profit business, but absolutely everything is to support this demographic. We'll only have three rooms upstairs for them. Our intention in the long run is to expand. We're looking at two hundred and ninety-four acres in Lockridge, which is still in Jefferson County, very open, if anybody knows of a property in Fairfield itself because I love this town and want to support as much as I can economically, bridging the community in this town itself. I'm here because our desire is to expand so that we can also support veterans and individuals aging out of the foster care system so that we can really start to change the tide of societal maladies that are plaguing not just locally, but nationally, internationally, really. Phase one is our building at Istanbul Grill. Phase two is a bigger property so we can have our clients come through and they're building a foundation of their two-point-O lives where they start to really learn emotional, mental, physical, spiritual, social, financial, a foundation in every part of life. And as part of the hours they'll work in our forward-facing commercial businesses, we will have them build their own regenerative tiny home so that they know how to do maintenance, repair their own house and they've been rehomed. Should they choose to stay on our property or ever leave, they don't have to go back to where the trauma happened. That's for all of these populations. We need a bigger space to do that than our Istanbul Grill building, right? So I'm really here to introduce myself, to let you all know what we're up to. I'm sure that there's been a little bit of a rumor mill that that building got sold and to some city folk that came in or whatever, right? So that's me, I'm just here to say hello. And then I'm also calling in conscious collaborators, anybody who resonates with what we're doing, who has a workshop, they wanna help the women learn their zone of genius or investors is always great, right? If anybody's aware of grants or wants to come volunteer their time to help me renovate the building. I'm here with open hands and an open heart, just introducing myself.
Thank you. Any questions, council? I assume you've reached out to some of the other local organizations and what they do and figure out how you can collaborate?
Yeah, I have a, an email out of plan to get together with the director of the well and I know the Atumwa Women's Crisis Center is somebody that I need to go discuss with. I haven't made it to Atumwa but once, they were closed while I was there. So I am working to do as much as we can to collaborate with pre-existing organizations. We're awaiting our 501(c)(3) status, we've applied, we're just waiting to be approved. And hopefully, within the next month or two, we'll be able to start supporting women and children survivors. And when we expand, then veterans and individuals aging from the foster care system.
How many people are aging out every year, do you know, in Iowa?
In Iowa, I'm not sure. I, because I just moved here from Atlanta, so I know in Atlanta that it was significant. And I do know that it's just a very scary place for people who don't have a safety net. And there's a lot of especially dangerous situations that those individuals get into without a safety net, which is part of why we wanna give them the ability to have a home.
Yeah, great.
What would a speakeasy be about? What would a speakeasy be about?
Just enjoying, like adults being out. I'm going to do like Tuesday night, Adult Talent Night on Tuesday nights, and just a place to gather, just a couple few hours, so that we can kind of have somewhere fun to go. I know there's a couple of places open in town, and we'd like to add to the enjoyment of an evening or later evening situation in Fairfield. It's a little bit quiet downtown later in the evening, and I get it, because there's so many warm homes to be in. But for those looking for a good time, just some levity.
Thank you.
Great. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, next is Bob Ferguson, Initiative for Sustainable Communities.
Well, thank you for having me here. Has everyone received the package that Rebecca put up?
It's attached.
Yes.
Okay. Has anyone looked at the package?
Yes.
Okay. Jeff Kirson and I have had a wonderful relationship for quite a number of years. Every year or so, we go to Des Moines, we have lunch, and normally some really good idea comes out from that. And he sent me an email saying there is this IIIC program, and that he thinks that Fairfield would be ideally situated. And as you read, it's basically a program of University of Iowa, a number of professors, a total of about 100 professors and students, and whatever it is that you want to be working on, whether it's elements of the RACT or anything else, you tell them what you want to... we tell them what we want them to work on, and they go to work collaboratively to create solutions and just resource, and added resource. As far as I know, there's no cost to it. It is competitive, so we need to fill in the application, and basically the material that I gave you is my version of the application. I have passed that through Connie and Doug, gotten their thumbs up. So basically, it looks like a great opportunity. I really enjoy... I asked Jeff, so give me some specifics from your perception, looking from the outside at Fairfield and knowing about this program. What do you think would be valuable? And so there's 12 points here, and this is certainly not comprehensive, but it's an idea of what these folks could work on for us. So, any questions?
What are you looking for the council to do?
Give me the authority to make an application. I put my name on as the responsible party, and the three officials that they will be contacting are also listed here, and...
Are these interns in the University of Iowa who'll be working on this program?
No, they're students.
They're students?
They're students. So this would be odd. I don't know the exact structure of this, but I presume this is either a competitive thing the students would apply to be part of, or they become part of it in some way or the other. But they're professors who are working with the students, and that's all I know at this point.
I can speak to this a little bit. Wheaton Companies engaged with the entrepreneurship section of the University of Iowa and had students create a website for us, and they did a phenomenal job. So it's a really great collaborative partnership.
And I did check with Pathfinders. They just finished a program with Pathfinders, and they were very happy with it. They said they were great to work with, and...
What's your timeline, Bob? When's the grant have to be in, and when do you expect to hear back? Or do you know yet?
Well, yes, the grant is just a competitive, you know, you're either accepted or you're not. It's for the '26, '27 school year. The deadline to put the application in is the 15th of January.
Okay.
And my suggestion is to get it in as fast as possible, because I'm sure there'll be more than one or two communities who are going to want to be part of this.
Okay.
So I just need a vote that I can fill in the application and send it in.
Okay. Is there a motion to move forward on this?
Moved to approve.
Application. Moved by Caness?
Second.
Second by Toohill. Any other questions? Okay, the motion is to move forward on that application, let Bob move forward on that application. So go ahead and call the roll. Caness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. That was approved unanimously. And last, thank you, Bob. Appreciate that very much. And last is Sue Burkey. She's interested in purchasing 604 North C Street, which is a red-tagged property, and I know there was something going to happen on Friday, so I'm not sure. I believe.
Right. So I got one of these to all of you. I hope you had a minute to look through it before tonight. So when I scheduled to be on the agenda tonight, we didn't know whether the owner of this property was going to give it to the city or sell it to my son and I, and she has decided to sell it to us, so we have a signed purchase agreement. So one of the contingencies on that agreement is that we will sign a contract with the city to assume the nuisance case that's ongoing, and the part of fulfilling that is that I submit a plan for the renovation, which I have done in here, and then also that we have to put up some money into escrow. John threw out the possibility tonight, or yes, this afternoon, of maybe $10,000. I don't know who makes that final decision, but I'm voting for $5,000 or whatever. Anyway, I want to do the renovation. It's what I've been doing here for a long time, and I like your support.
And you desire to live in the house after you get it done, correct, Sue?
I'm saying that. I don't know where that was coming from. Yeah, I am definitely going to live in it.
Yeah. So John, where are we at with this contract?
Well, this is a case that goes all the way back to last February. Connie Bryant is the owner right now. Connie's represented by an attorney, and so is Sue Burkey. I've talked to both of those attorneys. This property, if we could compare it to another property we still have in litigation, is very much like the B Street property with the Goodman case. That case, we had an $18,000 deposit account. That money's still there. It's subject to dispute right now, but it was there to cover the eventual demolition if the owner did not do what was promised. That's a long time ago now, but that money's still there. This situation, the property, isn't quite as deteriorated as the North B Street property. And I mentioned when we were talking with Ms. Burkey about this last Wednesday, I believe it was, may have been Tuesday, but anyway, that we did, in situations where properties were anticipated to be demolished, and somebody basically prevailed on the council with the idea that it could be a makeover, we did occasionally request a deposit, especially if the property is looking like it might be a major demolition cost if need be. So that's been on the table. The figure $18,000 that I threw out as far as the Goodman property in North B was not a figure that we proposed to Ms. Burkey. We told her that significantly less than that would probably still be a good faith showing on her part. But it was mentioned as far as the same range as what we believed we were going to do if Connie Bryant, the owner that was considering giving the city the property in return for an '82, '83 tax write-off, that form would require that the city have some opinion of value of the property they were being given. That value that was discussed with Ms. Burkey was that we felt the property might have a value as great as $9,000 or $10,000 just for the lot. And at that point, the lot value and what was going to be exchanged for that with Ms. Bryant was the topic of, I believe, negotiations between Ms. Burkey and Ms. Bryant about a cash payment versus what Ms. Bryant would benefit from if she had a tax write-off. I believe it was on Thursday that Ms. Bryant talked with her CPAs. She doesn't live here locally. She then indicated that she felt that she was going to come out better on this if she dealt with it as a cash sale, but that the cash sale couldn't happen immediately. I believe both Ms. Burkey and Ms. Bryant have talked about a closing date in January. Is that right?
Well, it could happen as soon as we can get the abstract updated, so however long that takes.
Yeah. I don't know what that looks like over at the abstract company, but anyway, the amount of deposit was top-end $18,000, the amount that was talked about when we were discussing this at our meeting with Ms. Burkey, was probably more like the $9,000 or $10,000 figure. And that would be not all that it would take to demolish this place if we had to do that, but we're taking it on good faith that what she's shown in her list of improvements and so forth, and that she wants to live there, will mean that this deposit will basically be something that we refund to her if she performs what she says she will. So from that standpoint, it's intended to be less, but I would probably not consider $5,000 in the same sense as $9,000 or $10,000. I would expect it to be something in the same range as what we value that, and we'd already had some discussions about this before as far as the lot having at least that value. We've also had some other properties that were gifts and teardowns that the lot always was valued at least that much. So that's where the figure came from, and I think that's been explained to Ms. Burkey before, but it's still your offer, so, you know, you have the final on the proposal.
What do you mean?
Well, you tell the council what you consider doing. What I'm in the midst of right now is we have a lawsuit up in the courthouse that she's buying a piece of if she gets into this. And the intention would be that we go ahead with an improvement agreement with an escrow, and we let Ms. Bryant out of this, and Ms. Burkey takes over and performs. That's the way it's been explained to Ms. Burkey, and that's what she thinks she can do, I believe.
I know I can.
So you're asking the council to listen to her offer to the council and accept this proposal that she has about moving forward?
Right. And this proposal's been, I guess, screened with the idea that there would be some kind of deposit. I have pictures of the property. It's been full of junk for quite a while. It's not any insult to you, but it's trashy inside.
I do the opposite of that.
It's got broken windows, open doors, animals that have been in there. Some things, I think, that Ms. Burkey found when she walked to the property in the middle of the trash inside the house were dead animals, so, you know, it's one of those extra treats you get when you go into something that you haven't had anybody occupy for a while. So she's got her work cut out for her. Also, it is something, though, that she's pretty confident about. I know she was explaining her different improvements, so...
I've done a lot of them. This is the worst. It's the worst. I can't wait.
Is a TV show coming?
I hope not.
Okay. So I saw you looking up value over there, Terry. Yes?
Oh.
Does that say anything you want to share?
No, I actually didn't look it up.
Oh, okay. I thought that's what you were doing, that you wanted to share something.
I can.
Okay, so I guess we're, you know, there, here to listen to what your offer is.
You mean how much am I willing to pay for the escrow?
Well, yeah, the escrow and the agreement with us is what you would like the council to consider.
Okay.
I know you have a separate private agreement on a purchase agreement with Ms. Bryant.
Right. Well, I just don't want to get, you know, eliminated because you don't think I want to give enough escrow money. So I think you should tell me what your bottom number is, and that's what I'll do.
Well, the $9,000 or $10,000 range is what we talked about instead of, you know...
Nine sounds great.
It's always going to be the lowest figure I anticipate, so...
Okay, so nine. And then my plan in here for the renovation is a one-year plan, because you never know what's going to happen, and stuff always happens. Also, if we close in January, it could be, you know, this much snow on the ground, and I can't start that renovation, that particular renovation, in the dead of winter with no heat in the building. There's no heat there, and all the trash in the yard will be frozen to the ground. So I might not be able to get started until late winter. But I will start as soon as I possibly can, and then I assume the clock will start ticking then for my year.
And what will happen is the court, if the court's informed that you bought a piece of the lawsuit and that Ms. Bryant is out, and you come back to the court, there will be a periodic, probably about every 60 days...
That's fine.
...a compliance review. And if you need additional time because of weather, the court, I've never seen it turn people down because of weather.
Okay.
So you should be okay.
Yeah, the house essentially is your value. It has $700 worth of value on the assessed value.
Interesting. So I have a question, John, just for clarification. I mean, we... this is a little bit different than what we've done before.
It is.
You know, where normally we would have a public hearing where anybody can bid. You know, is this situation different?
Yeah, but we don't own the property.
Yeah.
We don't own the property, so we have a public hearing.
Right, that's true.
We just own a lawsuit, and we have an ordinance violation. It's actually, there's a list of...
Okay. I just wanted to be really clear about procedure, that we're, it's, the way we're going down this is appropriate.
I'd make a motion that for the consideration of $9,000 in an escrow account, that we allow for the transaction to occur.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Flornoy?
So that includes lifting the red tag on the property, or not?
Ah...
There is a red tag on the property that's got about three pages of problems.
I think the nuisance stays on it until it's...
Well, yeah, until it's habitable, and then it can be lifted.
Yep.
Okay, so that doesn't restrict anything?
Mm-mm.
Okay. There's no deadline or anything?
No deadline. I mean...
Associated with the red tag.
Once, you know, weather allows for her to start.
Your workout plan has dates on it, doesn't it?
Sorry, what?
Your workout plan has dates.
Yeah, but that was going to start like December.
Right, I understand that. We can move it all back accordingly.
Do they have to recreate the abstract, do you know?
Sorry, what?
Do they have to recreate the abstract, or is there an actual...
I didn't ask her. I assume she has one, but I don't know that.
I don't know it either, frankly.
Because I would... You could close well before January.
I hope.
Yeah.
When would the money be given back, when the red tag is lifted?
After we have the inspection.
Okay.
There are parts of the list of things that are defects right now. One of them includes an electrical inspection.
Right.
And I know there's between roof leaks, broken windows, general debris, a balcony that's rotten, stairwell that's rotten, things like... You've been through the property, so you know what your conditions are.
Everything is on the list.
Right, so...
So who will conduct the inspection?
Well, it depends on whether we have a code enforcement person to do it. We have used somebody else to inspect before, but I think probably by the time you have your work done, we'll have our inspector position sorted in some way.
We hope.
Yeah.
So I have one more question for you.
Sure.
When do I sign the contract with the city? Before we close, after we close?
All I'm going to do is continue court until you and Ms. Bryant get your transaction transacted.
I'd probably do it at close, Sue.
I would, too.
At the closing? You'll get something to me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so the motion, you want to read the motion?
So it's to accept the proposal and require a $9,000 escrow.
Okay. Any other questions?
And have the contract with the city completed by closing date.
Okay. You're okay with that, Terry?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions, council? Or any discussion, I should say?
Yeah, I'm glad you're doing it. You're going to save us $15,000 or $20,000 takedown fee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So thank you.
You're welcome. And, you know, just one note, I know somebody that will demolition buildings for a lot less than $15,000. You should call me. You should call me.
Good to know.
Okay. Okay, so let's go ahead and call a roll. Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, great, that was approved unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
And, okay, so we're going to move on to resolutions, action items and ordinances. The first action item, consideration of refund of trash recycling service rates. So, we talked about this during the work session.
I'd make the motion that we contact the utility, the biller, billing person. What's her name?
The customer.
The customer. And offer them $750, bring this to a close and call it done.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Flornoy, second by Caness to close this with $750 refund to the customer. Any other discussion?
I guess just to point out too and make it clear, that's, we can go back as far as two years to refund for overbilling and that's about an average of what two years billing would be. So, we're at current rates. So, we're refunding at current rates for the previous two years.
But we should make clear to the audience that they've been overbilled since 2009. So, I think we're coming out ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, but we are going back as far as we can to two-year limit, so.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? If not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, great, that was approved unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you.
And, okay, so we're going to move on to resolutions, action items and ordinances. The first action item, consideration of refund of trash recycling service rates. So, we talked about this during the work session.
I'd make the motion that we contact the utility, the biller, billing person. What's her name?
The customer.
The customer. And offer them $750, bring this to a close and call it done.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Flornoy, second by Caness to close this with $750 refund to the customer. Any other discussion?
I guess just to point out too and make it clear, that's, we can go back as far as two years to refund for overbilling and that's about an average of what two years billing would be. So, we're at current rates. So, we're refunding at current rates for the previous two years.
But we should make clear to the audience that they've been overbilled since 2009. So, I think we're coming out ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, but we are going back as far as we can to two-year, so.
Yep. Okay, any other discussion? If not, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that was approved unanimously to move forward on the Civic Plus. Next action item, consideration of acceptance of 2025 bridge inspection report.
Okay. So, this year's bridge inspection included four of our bridges and culverts. They're listed on page, pages five and six of the attached PDF. This group of bridges, bridges and culverts are done every two years. We have an additional four bridges and culverts that are done on a four-year cycle. And that cycle is determined by FHWA and their classification, I'm assuming based off of their size and the capacity, the amount of cars over them, but I'm not 100% sure on that. Mainly, I would guess to the size. And so, the bridges and culverts that were inspected in this two-year cycle included the Crow Creek Culvert on B Street, the new Crow Creek Bridge on Burlington, and the Walton Lake Primary Spillway Bridge. So, this not the golf cart. This is the one that goes over the spillway that takes you on Walton Drive. That's inspected every two years. And then additionally, there's two minor, I say minor culverts because they actually do not require FHWA inspection. D Street, near the golf course, the city chose to have that one inspected every two years. We know that it's in need of repairs. It's under our jurisdiction. It's not something that city staff can replace if it would have problems. It would be a major expense that we need to keep track of. And so, we do have the D Street one inspected every two years and then the Park Street Culvert on that same water shed inspected every four years. So, with this, with this inspection, there were no immediate concerns. We've had concerns in the past with the Walton Spillway, but with those repairs that were done in 2017, again, no immediate concerns. On page five and six that I want to point out, all the way over on the right side, there's an estimated remaining life on there. And that is the estimated remaining life of the most critical part or the worst part, I should say. So, on Walton Lake, the one item that did surprise me this year, so on the Walton Lake Bridge, one of the panels, bridge panels, is showing deterioration that was not evident in the inspection two years ago. It could be just by different inspectors. Again, this is not an immediate concern. It's just something they're saying like, okay, 10 years. So, we need to start thinking about putting this on our five-year plan. And again, it's just one of the panels. It's not the whole bridge. Also, you'll see then on page six of the PDF that D Street Culvert has, it says estimated remaining life of eight years. Again, that is some repairs to the outlet wall. That one, that was on our radar and we actually have those repairs on the CIP for fiscal year '28. So, again, that's why we do these inspections, make sure that we can get these repairs on our CIP and not have surprises like we've had with the last two years. Let's see if there's anything else. So, as far as the Walton, we'll, when we go to update the CIP, we'll start to work that in, in future years. And again, it's just one panel. It's not the whole bridge. It's not a critical thing. No load postings or anything like that on it. No safety concerns on any of the things that are inspected. And so, unless there's any questions, I'd like a motion to accept the 2005 bridge inspections.
Is the one in the spillway?
Yes.
Do you have the report in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Page 35. Is that the picture of the, the bridge over the spillway?
So, I don't have it in the same order, but...
Page 33, I'm sorry. Did I say 35?
So, is it this one? Oh, yep. Yeah. So, that area, what I'm guessing is that when they were there, that there's, there must be a washout going. That would be north towards the lake that, that street crew must have addressed between when we've been out there the last couple of times. But, so that is the panel, though, then?
Okay.
That they're saying the concrete portion is the portion that they're concerned about. They weren't concerned about the washout, the whole area there. But we were just there Tuesday, Doug, and it did not look like that. So, the street crew must have addressed it.
Okay.
Is there any benefit to addressing that while the water level's down at the lake?
We couldn't if we wanted to. I mean, that, that precast panel has a lead time of months. So, it would be something that we would want to schedule away in advance. As far as like the D Street Culvert headwall, we are lumping those improvements in with headwall repairs to Kirkwood and B Street. And so, we would, we could do just this panel, but we would want to see if there's any other improvements that we could lump in with this, that, you know, any precast, if there's another smaller culvert that we need to replace anywhere in town. Because to have a contractor come and do just that panel, we'd be spending a lot of mobilization. But yeah, the lead time on that specific is a pre, it's a precast panel. The good news is with it being a precast panel is that it's, the construction time is relatively small. Even possibility of leaving one lane open while they're doing it, it's, I mean, they're going to take it out and put a new one back in. So, relatively small lead time. Not lead time, construction time. Long lead time, small construction.
There's two in there, one on each side.
Yes.
On the road.
I don't know if there's two or four, but yes, there are, there's multiple panels in there. So, it's, but it's just one panel that they have, want us to keep an eye on. So, and again, this was inspected every two years. So, you know, if we see a rapid change two years from now, then we bump it up quicker on the CIP.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay. Move by Toohill? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gandy? Any other discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve the 2025 bridge inspection report. Please call a roll. Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Thank you, that was approved unanimously. Next action item, consideration of change order number three for the fire station project. This looks like it's in our favor.
It is, it is. This is, the majority of this was brought to us by the architect doing a value engineering. I don't like that word, but looking for some ways for the city to save money. So, the change order includes two items. A majority of it is for a deduct of $84,616.11. Jason, if you can bring up those two images that I sent you. Let's, so what the change order is for is to go from a metal roof on the bay area and going to, drawing a total blank, I want to say plastic, but that's not, oh, poly roof. And so, really, the only reason that the metal roof is, was put in in the first place is an aesthetic. You can, not even from this angle, so I said, this is, this is like my view at five feet. You know, a taller person might be able to see the roof from the street level, but you can't even see the roof at this angle. There will still be metal fascia on the front. It's just the very top of the roof is going towards that poly surface. It has the same warranty, same life expectancy. It's really just an aesthetic that we're, that we're looking at. And so, again, the architect brought this forward as a way to save money on this project and worked with the contractor and the supplier to finalize this number. And Jason, if you want to go to the next one, I think it might show, you know, so the, the roof might be more visible from the backside because of the way that the roof's sloping. But again, it's just, it's going to be, it's aesthetic, not necessarily anything as far as structural or life expectancy of the roof.
Great.
And then, oh, go ahead.
The $82,000, it just gets credited back, it doesn't go into the contingency fund or does it?
Um, yes, in the sense that it's all the same project fund. I mean, the total contract amount decreases, so that gives us more contingency or I should say it gives us less that we need to continue to look for grants for.
Is there a motion to accept this change order?
So moved.
Moved by Caness?
Second.
Second by Toohill? Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Caness?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved unanimously to accept that change order. Change on the roof on the fire station, which helps us over $84,000.
I'm sorry, what?
Oh, yeah. Next action item, consideration of amendment number one to engineering services agreement with French Rentecor for Walton Lake Golf Cart Bridge replacement. This is, I think, $9,500, is that correct?
Yeah, good evening, council. This is an amendment number one for the Walton Lake Golf Cart Bridge. This is for engineering during construction and construction observation. The agreement's for $9,500 and it's an hourly contract. So, we're basically going to be, whenever we're out there observing the contractor's work, mainly the items we'll be looking for is making sure they're using suitable fill and how they're filling the dam, making sure they're getting good compaction when they're placing that fill. And then when also when they're installing the box culvert and mainly watching how they backfill that is kind of the main items that we would want to keep an eye on. And we, again, just to reiterate, it's an hourly contract, so we'd only charge for the time that we are out there during, in observing.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy?
Second.
Second by Toohill? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Okay, that was approved unanimously, again, to approve the engineering services for a French Rentecor. Thank you. Next is a second reading of ordinance 1275. This has to do with fines on dogs and if you get cited for allowing your dog to run loose. The first offense was $50, as I recall. We're moving all, the first, second, third offenses up $25, correct? So, it would go to 75, 100 and 125. Before we vote on this, I will open a public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this particular ordinance, 1275? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And council, is there a motion to approve?
I'd make the motion we move ordinance 1275 from the second to the third reading.
Okay, moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Gandy? Any discussion? Hearing none, please call a roll. Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thank you, approved unanimously to move ordinance 1275 from the second to the third reading. It's related to dog fines. Okay, the next is a public hearing. This has to do with ordinance 1276. Again, this is the second reading. This is related to the property taxes in Tiff District out at Sunrise Trail. And just for legal purposes, I will read it on the matter of an ordinance, providing that general property taxes levied and collected each year on certain property located within the Sunrise Trail urban renewal area in the city of Fairfield, county of Jefferson, state of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the state of Iowa, city of Fairfield, county of Jefferson, Fairfield Community School District and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Sunrise Trail urban renewal area phase one. Gee, thanks. There will be no test. So with that, I'll open a public hearing, does anybody want to speak to that issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask council to move this from the second to the third reading.
I move that we move Ordinance twelve seventy, twelve seventy-six to its third and final reading.
Second.
Thank you. Move by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Caness?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yes.
Thank you, that was approved unanimously. I don't really have anything under the mayor's report, however, just to give you a heads up, we are finalizing a new task force relating to this new grant we received for the Housing two point O Rural Empowerment, so I anticipate to bring that to you in December for your approval. So that will be happening. City Attorney Report?
Yes. I went to school, that was last Friday and last Thursday night in Des Moines, Ms. Attorney's Annual Seminar and Annual Meeting. I'm not going to belabor everything that's in the materials, but I brought a copy of the materials book for the city administration, so it'll be around here if we want to talk about things in there in more depth. There's a copy, it's not a perfect copy, but it will be available. There were a couple of things that struck me that I thought we maybe talked a little bit about. I talked to Rebecca earlier, there've been a couple of Iowa Supreme Court cases talking about open meetings practices, and we had a Supreme Court Justice, Justice Mansfield, speaking to us about things that they want to see the municipals be more careful about. When we have closed sessions, the gist of these two cases is that sometimes there's not enough of a record on the closed session. So what we're going to do in the future is make a little record at the beginning, if somebody sued us, and our notice to the public about why we're having a closed session is somebody sued us, under that code section of Chapter twenty-one of the code, we will actually, in our record that is made at the beginning of the closed session after we've gone into it, we will explain that this is about lawsuits such and such versus the city, that it's a claim that's been filed and it is in the process of either being defended or maybe we're defending it in-house. But anyway, that kind of detail, the two cases that made it up to Supreme Court both had to do with employment and personnel disputes where someone had asked to have a closed session in their capacity under their procedures and personnel policies. And in each of those situations, the Supreme Court, as well as the trial court, had some questions about whether it really needed to be a closed session or not, and the record didn't reflect anything about why. Basically, Justice Mansfield was saying that it would have helped the Supreme Court in both of their scenarios if they even had a paragraph of explanation about what the necessity was for the closed session and what parts of it were deemed private and protected and which parts were not. So in the future, when we have a scenario like that, once in a while, we do have a personnel matter or something where someone asks to have something protected in that regard rather than some of the other reasons we go into closed session. I suppose another area that we'd want to protect is if we were considering a real estate purchase or something like that, we don't want it out in the public. But we will make some kind of detailed instruction or paragraph at the beginning of our session, and I'll just ask you to put up with me, and Rebecca and I will bounce it back and forth for a paragraph or two, and we'll comply with what the Supremes want as far as that process going forward. They have, part of the presentation by the justice from the Supreme Court was sort of a lecture to all of us city attorneys about stressing the importance to our council that these things be carefully followed as far as the rules, and that council, you're off the hook anytime that you have advice from the city attorney or a advising attorney, maybe Aylers, that says, do it this way. At that point, you aren't held responsible for what you've done, instead, it goes back to the advisor who basically, I guess the Supreme Court would slap my hands if I told you the wrong way to do things as far as a closed session. But anyway, the gist of it is that when you do things this way, you avoid some rather stiff penalties. The legislature has decided to make a lot of the penalties related to open meetings and public records about ten times what they used to be. So instead of two hundred and fifty dollars or five hundred dollars, you're looking at five thousand dollars for some of these penalties, and that's not something to shake at, I guess it's more something that you want to watch out for and rely on.
Just to reiterate, John, so if you as city attorney advise the council on a course of action in a closed session, and we accept your advice or have a response to your advice, we're shielded because of the advice coming from you?
You're shielded because you've followed the advice of council.
Thank you.
What if we have a motion that's out of the open meetings law because it's not on the agenda, but you don't object to it or correct the council, are we also off the hook?
Good question. If, I guess, it kind of depends on the circumstances, Doug, if there's some reason for there to be an emergency action, be different. If it's something that should be put off to the next council and put on an agenda and noticed, you probably have to take it on a case by case, be my, my thought. But, now, other, other than that, and listening to the Supreme Court, we also had some conversations about cities and finances. In fact, we had about a third of the book was on public finance, and for some reason, the legislature isn't letting up on our favorite piece of legislation, House File seven eighteen. There's still more to come as far as efforts to trim us more fully on that for another year or two. And there's also the House, well, it's not the House, it's the Legislative Budget Reconciliation Committee comes up with what they think our budget cap is going to be looking like on the legislative side based on anticipated revenues versus anticipated expenditures. They are indicating, as far as the Reconciliation Bureau, that we're probably going to have because of things going on out east and funds that are frozen and that we can't count on, about one point three billion dollars less coming through the state than were originally forecast even last year. So this thing called Doge and some of the executive orders that have frozen things are going to have an impact back here. Part of the reason the legislature is continuing to look at House File seven eighteen and other things to tighten our belts more than we probably feel comfortable with, but that is going on. I'm thinking also, though, that if you're watching much of what's happening, yesterday the Second Circuit overturned a couple of the things that had been Doge freezes on funding, one of them I mentioned to you a couple of times, a couple of months ago, as far as our city policies that we re-adopt every year as far as being eligible for our different federal grants and federal funds, has to do with the DEI policies, which have been all but stricken down as far as different departments by executive order. The Second Circuit said those orders were illegal, that only Congress can strike down those statutes that created the protections and the sentiments about DEI. So the diversity, equity, and inclusiveness parts of our policies that we adopt, I told you before that it did not appear yet that those have been challenged, and I didn't think we need to change them unless they are repealed. So right now, what we have as far as our policies, which we'll be looking at again the first part of the year to re-adopt a set of about twenty policies that keep us eligible for our federal funding, it looks like that question's answered unless it goes to the Supreme Court. But I suspect that by the time we're going through our budget in March, that there may be a half a dozen more of these kinds of rulings that point out something is not legal about the way something's been frozen or eliminated, and we're just going to have to watch it to see how it impacts us to some extent. We also had a conversation with one of our speakers about immigration policies, student visas, visas that are being summarily lifted en masse, and there's some district court, federal district court cases so far that are challenging that part of it. I keep track of that because we have eighty-nine nationalities with student visas in this community. We also have about forty residents that happen to be in a work visa scenario with about two hundred and some other workers over at the beef pack in Atumwa, and I believe Homeland Security already revoked two hundred and fifty work visas over there. So we may have somebody showing up in our community to do some ICE enforcement just because of those things that look like precursors. So that question, it isn't on our table right now, but it may come visit us in the next few months. So having said that, I've got some other things that are from the school, but I don't think I'm going to belabor them, it may be a time to talk about those next, next work session or whatever. I do want to also indicate that I've drafted a lease which I'll circulate to all of you by email as far as something that probably should be talked over between now and our Christmas council meeting, and that's the Walton Lake Lease. Our city engineers also drafted a remake of the irrigation lease that has to do with the use of the Walton Lake surface water partly for irrigation out there on the golf course. And those two things, they need to be renewed, they need also to be talked over with the Walton Board, so we'll try to facilitate that between now and December, mid-December. Also, you heard Ms. Burkey tonight, that's been an ongoing discussion for the last two or three weeks. It's different than some of our other solutions, but I guess we try to extend people opportunities if we can. This is a facility or a house that if she can't show progress in the first three months, I'll be reporting to you about the compliance review the court has at some point, we can ask her back in, she seems to be willing to talk with you pretty openly about this, so just have to see how that goes. We have some things that are going to have to do with the trial schedule for Mr. Goodman's house up on B Street, and we've also got a few other nuisance properties that are sort of in limbo right now, that we'll be back to you about as far as trying to move them forward to get some of them fixed. And then we've got the big problem, which I believe our city administrator did receive an appraisal report on the Penny Lane Building, and that's something we probably need to go back to Property Committee and talk about next. That will be coming up for a court review in January again, and it is something that we, we wanted to see what the appraisal on the place would look like as well as the inspection on the place, and that's been done now. So there'll be more coming on that also. Pretty much that's it, John.
Great, thank you. Committee board reports, Property Committee?
All right, Property Committee has met three times, and we've discussed a proposal by the Beautification Committee to put in a water fountain, that is about, about ten feet in diameter at the base and maybe the same height. You saw it, right? I haven't seen it, but they wanted to put it in on the Central Park in the southeast corner, close to the diagonal sidewalk, just on the south side of that sidewalk. And Pam and Calvin were both opposed to that location primarily because of water lines that run underneath the park, every twenty feet, apparently they're spaced out, and one of the concerns was if one of those lines needed to be repaired, then the weight of that fountain would interfere with their work or ability to get to the line. And then the other argument in opposition to that location was the aesthetics. So a lot of times fountains will be the central piece on the square, but we have a gazebo, and people thought it might be distracting, and it's not quite, it's big enough to almost be a central piece, but not quite big enough to be a central piece, so we thought aesthetically it would not fit very well. So the idea then was to look at Howard Park, I think was one of the suggestions, the Civic Center and the corner of Second and Burlington, right between the sign, Fairfield Sign and the bathrooms that are going to presumably get renovated. So that's where it sits right now. Council, the committee did not make a decision about that, nor, so it doesn't have a recommendation tonight for you, but that's the status of that current project.
Wasn't the southwest corner that the fountain was going to be on?
Southeast.
Southeast.
Toward the east side of the square. That's where the white circle drawn on the grass was.
Right, that's right. I'm making sure, okay.
Anyways, it's not going to be down there, apparently.
No, not going to be there. East or west, doesn't matter.
All right, I thought Deborah might be here tonight to talk about it, but she's going to meet with her committee, I guess, and make a decision about where they want to go with it. Then we also have met about the Walton Lease, and I think the committee's consensus is probably to offer a ten-year lease, they had asked for twenty-five years, but I think the consensus is ten. And Melanie, well, I invited them to the meeting, but we haven't seen them yet. They sent me an email with a return address that says Walton Club, and so they responded to my last email, but I don't know about if they got the earlier ones, but I sent it to the email address that they asked me to send it to, but they didn't show up in any of our meetings.
And we, our current lease, I believe expires at the end of this year.
End of this year, yeah.
You think you can get it wrapped up by December fifteenth?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
No problem.
Didn't know if that was the plan, or I was hoping that was the plan.
No, the hardest part is just, well, we spent a lot of time talking about the fountain. So the big part of the lease that we wanted to rewrite were the descriptions of the land that the Walton Club would be responsible for maintaining. So the current language is roughly, it says, area around the golf cart shed, or area around the golf club house, which is pretty vague. So Melanie drew up some areas that describe more exactly the area around the golf cart shed. So basically, it's a property line, and it goes over to where there's a, the trail goes around the golf cart shed down to the Walton Road. So the boundaries go out to that trail, where there's a right-of-way, Melanie? On either side of the trail, there's a right-of-way or description?
No, but we're making one.
Okay, so she's going to do that. And then the other one is, and that's all called Outlet B, right? In the legal description, Outlet B, have you heard of that? Anyways.
That's the car sheds.
Yeah.
I read it somewhere. And then the clubhouse itself sits on Lot Six, but then they take care of another piece of property that's to the north and west of that building, and so we also have a description of that, that's going to be called Outlet A.
It already is.
Yeah, okay. So as soon as we get, we have a preliminary description of that, but it's not a final description, has to be reviewed by someone with a license and what have you. So that's about it. We haven't heard from them, except that they, I sent them a copy of this diagram and told them that basically, it's more or less the property they're already taking care of, we're just having a more precise description of the, of the land, that's all. We're just having a more precise description of the land, that's all.
Thank you.
We'll have it ready by the fifteenth, I presume.
Okay, great, yeah.
Pardon me, I had a question for Doug. Did your committee have a position on the, I'm gonna call it the shoreline easement that goes up to the boundary line of the lake that...
We talked about that.
Goes across from where the subdivision is to the other side where the clubhouse is. But then north of that, there aren't any shoreline easements shown.
So there's a ten-foot easement?
Yeah, that part of that was a question about, is there some risk from the way the golfers play golf to somebody that's standing next to the fairway fishing? If we say it's okay for them to be there for that shoreline easement all the way around the lake, everywhere, are we creating a risk? And then the other question I think we had, Mel, was the idea that people would be putting kayaks or canoes under the new bridge. Whether it's a culvert or however, should they be trying to come through there? Or should we just leave that as an area that's off limits?
I think Melanie had said we're gonna put a sign up on the north side of the bridge. "Enter at your own risk" or something like that. That's all we, I mean, what else could we do?
Okay.
And then as far as the easement around the lake, there's already a ten-foot easement or right-of-way around the southern part of the lake where the properties about the lake. But there's no easement or right-of-way on the north side along the fairway. So we decided not to touch that because we'll just have that rental property to the club and then so residents wouldn't be allowed on that side of the lake. It can only be on the side of the lake where the properties are located. They're privately held properties.
Yeah. Shoreline easement, when we did the subdivision with the thirty-five lots, it was anticipated it'd be a, it still is a huge area as far as plenty of places to fish. I just imagine by the time we show the final version of the lease and what it covers, we may be having hearings on that again, so.
Maybe, but, I mean, the people fish off the bridge of the existing private bridge. I don't think they've ever asked permission or off the shore there. And the club never, as far as I know, never asked anybody to leave. But they got down along Fairwood Number One, they would be asked to leave, I think, a couple instances like that.
Yeah, Mr. Paget a couple times asked somebody to leave and called the police. So I just wanna be sure we're very specific about it when we get to new lease, so.
Great, good points.
All right.
Personnel?
We met last week. We talked about the sustainability coordinator position. We tabled that so that we can make sure we understand what we've agreed to for funding and what has been paid out. We gave Doug his employee evaluation. Everybody thinks Doug's doing a great job. We had, you know, a bunch of really positive things, couple just, you know, constructive criticism things. And it went really well. The P and Z code enforcement position was discussed. The department heads that were present recommended that we look at hiring a community resource officer in lieu of a CCO, a code compliance officer that is funded through City Hall. So the code compliance officer would actually house under the police department. And then we could hire a separate P and Z position at City Hall. The personnel committee was agreeable to that, and so they're doing further research to bring this option to the council. And that's pretty much it.
Great, thanks, we look forward to that. Administrator department reports?
I apologize, I have a lot, but I'll do my best here. Okay, on the project update, as far as projects, a couple things to mention. The sledge at the water treatment plant, they are still working on that removal. But it is, I mean, we're closer to the end than we are to the beginning, but we still have a long way to go there. And that contractor, Cornerstone's still working towards that. At the last meeting, you accepted the bids for Adams. I think since then, we've had our... Or when we opened the bids, we did discuss with them that they would likely do that work in April of next year. So we won't be seeing any construction on Adams, at least from the contractor of this year. And I doubt, there's gonna be a little bit of work at Main and Adams by City Cruise. And I would guess at the weather, where the weather is headed in the next couple days that we won't be seeing anything from the city side in 2025. As far as Walton Lake, we had a meeting with Drish Construction. Doug and I and French Reniker met with Drish on the nineteenth. They intend to move in equipment this week. I guess I didn't go out there today to see if they had started to move anything in. They may be starting some demolition this week. But again, with the weather that's expected to move in, they may be waiting until next week. This week, in addition to moving equipment in, they will likely be installing some additional safety fence and barricades on either end of the causeway in anticipation of the demolition. They also intend to install a plug in one of the drain pipes, so not the box culvert that goes under Walton Road. There's an additional drain pipe that goes under Walton Road. And that's gonna just give them a little bit of buffer that when the snow does melt after the Thanksgiving day snow, that that's not gonna be coming into their project site. The drainage has slowed dramatically because it's gravity that's flowing, the gravity going through the pipe and relies on the head pressure of the water within the lake. And as we're getting lower, that rate of drainage is decreasing. So there may be some additional pumping coming out of the lake in order to continue to lower and get to that elevation, the originally intended elevation of seven seventeen. I guess I just wanna assure the council that if we do do any of the pumping, we're still not looking at increasing the flow any more than it was at the original, when we originally opened the gates. So still keeping the downstream from flooding, as well as we're still looking at around the same elevations. The box culvert is nearly complete. I would say that it is done at this point, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. It's very, very close to complete. So about a month ahead of schedule. Drish has not arranged a delivery date, but again, once they get that demolition done, then they'll start, they'll get that scheduled. So a lot of good progress. And hopefully the weather holds out a little bit for them, and we can see a lot of work in the next month.
Can I ask for a question?
Mm-hmm.
So the north finger is dry?
Northwest or northeast?
Sorry, northwest, yes.
Okay.
North of the, where the bridge is?
Yes, dry-ish, yes.
That's what I thought, okay. And then on the south side, it has to come, the water level has to come down to a certain distance from the bridge, right?
Right, so when we were there, like on Tuesday...
Just for clarification purposes, because people wanna know why you're still doing the lake even though it's dry underneath the bridge. It has to have a certain distance from the bridge that has to be dry for them to work on it.
Yeah, and I don't have my plans with me. So when we were there on Tuesday, the water was, the edge of the water was maybe like a foot off the edge of the bridge. I mean, it was barely off the edge of the bridge. So the slopes of the dam are gonna be three to one. So you'd think that there's gonna be a distance off of the center line of the dam, off of the center line of the cart path, that that water needs to proceed to recede in order for that work area to be completely usable. So yes, it does need to continue to recede. Okay, and then I think that is all on project side of things. There's a lot of, a lot of other things going on in City Hall. And on the public worksite, on page, top of page four, so many Fairfield water customers received letters this week regarding their water service lines. Giving you guys a heads up in case you got any calls or you might be getting any calls. The DNR requires all water utilities to send our annual notification letters to any customers whose service line is listed in our inventory as lead, galvanized, or unknown. We did the inventory two summers ago. And people continued to inform us of their material over the last year. So where we have things at this point, anyone, again, who has lead, galvanized, or is listed as unknown in our service line inventory is required to get that letter. At this time, the state is not requiring the lines be replaced, but that will probably come at some point. That is why, that is my expectation, and that is why they are requiring us to send annual notices, would be my, would be my guess. Property owners, if they have exposed piping through a basement, we probably won't access a crawl space. But if they have exposed piping, they can call City Hall, and we can arrange an appointment to visually inspect the pipes so that we can update the inventory. Or if they're doing a major remodel and their contractor wants to submit information to us, that's fine too. Or we can come out during the remodel, anything. If they're, if you're listed as unknown in our system, we would love to get that updated, and you can work with City Hall staff to get that updated. The other thing that Shelby's been busy with is starting a trial period of the water scope application. So this is the, I'll say the app that goes along with the Metron meters. We talked about this in the Water Steward Committee a while, maybe over a year ago. At the time, Judy was the only user, or trial user. And so at this point, we are looking for about thirty existing Metron meter users to be part of the ninety-day trial period. The reason why we're looking for, you know, only thirty rather than doing everyone is identifying that we have all of the settings on our side correct, all the settings on their side correct. Are there any features that we need to turn on, turn off? We do have a few people that we know have Metron meters that we think that they'll find the app useful and provide us some honest feedback. But if anyone is listening to this and is, has a Metron meter and would like to be part of that trial, they can, again, contact Shelby at City Hall to be part of that trial period. That is what, that's what we've got going on in the utility department. So again, we have a lot going on right now. In planning and zoning, so we've been working on trying to update some of our policies and procedures. This is what happens when you guys give us an in-service day. We get like, we get some things done, we're getting some great things done. On the downtown, downtown events, so there were a couple applications today. There was Matt Welter's and the one for Mindy. And we were working on ways to improve this process. And I feel like we made it, we added some forms so that I feel like on first glance, it might seem like it is more of an inconvenience. But I'm hoping that it will allow for some more transparency in the process. What we're proposing going towards is a Central Park request that's handled entirely through the Park and Rec Department. And as long as you're not having any loudspeakers or requesting any parking to be blocked off, that just stays with Park and Rec. And Park and Rec can, you know, doesn't even bother City Hall staff. A lot of, I will say, like our gatherings, protests, things like that, a lot of those don't have, don't use loudspeakers. They're just a gathering. So those can go through Park and Rec without necessarily coming to council. Then we want, we wanted to go towards a noise exemption request rather than the downtown form. This is because generally, our noise exemptions do come from the downtown area. But occasionally, we'll have somebody wanting to be a few blocks off of downtown or even a completely different neighborhood. So if someone, whether they're in Central Park or having a block party, and they are using those speakers or bullhorns, they would do the noise exemption request. One of the things where, again, this is an additional form, but what it does is this form comes to council, it's labeled as noise exemption. It makes it very specific, or very, it makes it clearer to citizens of, on what's being requested. Rather than Central Park use, it lets people know that, oh, this church group or this organization is requesting a noise exemption on this day. And then what I'm looking for tonight is an approval of, and I'll get to the Christmas tree policy in a little bit, we should have flip-flopped those, is approval of the Planning and Zoning Policies 2025-2. And that is for the Central District parking, Central Business District parking. This is the way we've been handling things, but I wanted to put it in writing and make sure we're all on the same page. Generally, if a business has wanted to block off a few parking spaces, I have this written down as two for a short period of time, we've been approving that at a staff level. Larger street blocking for a longer period of time, anything around Central Park, anyone who's not a Central Business District building owner, any of those approvals have been coming to council. So you had, you know, Matt Welter's again tonight looking for street closures. You had Mindy's. And so our intent is to continue to come to the, to council for those parking requests. We already have a work and right-of-way form. So whether it's parking, it's putting up a dumpster, any of those things would be going on a form that we already have. I also put in this policy, this has been, again, the way that we've been handling it, but the nonprofits that are listed there that we would not charge them for traffic control rental. That's First Friday, Farmers Market Civic Center, Fairfield Chamber of Commerce, Kiwanis Kids Day, taxing entities such as the School District, JCHC, Jefferson County, and then any other applicants that the council approves at the time of their application. I will admit that we're gonna try this. If it allows for, it'll, it should allow us to clean up our procedure if there's gonna be a learning curve with citizens. But hopefully it makes things easier. If in six months it doesn't, we'll go back. But this is where we're, again, hoping to streamline the process a little bit. Keep, allow people to use Central Park if they're just gathering. Get that through Parks Department without coming to council. And those extra things, such as the noise and the parking, come to council for those, for those larger events.
Could we have the ones that aren't required to come to council, at least listed so the public is aware that they're going on?
So the ones that are not, are you talking about parks, the park use in general, or parking?
Park use.
Park use.
The ones that don't require council approval. You said they wouldn't come here.
Right.
How will the public become aware that there's an event going on on the square, for example, if it's not on the agenda?
I don't know, I, Becca, help me out here. I guess I would, don't be like the...
I mean, that, many a organization would have to advertise it, yeah.
But, I mean, I guess...
Would go out in our new notification system.
My concern is that...
We don't want to be the advertisement.
Right, we don't wanna be the advertisement. Just because somebody's using this, using the park,
Yeah.
does it mean that if they're not using a loudspeaker and they're not requesting any parking... parking, be blocked off, does it really change how Central Park gets used for the everyday citizen? To the point that we need to notify them?
What if you gave notice by making them part of the consent agenda?
Well, that's what we're trying to avoid, is like, if somebody just wants to, Bob, you still here, I'm going to pick on Bob, and they're going to just gather to have a rally, but if they're not having bullhorns or anything, and they're not blocking traffic, does it affect how anyone uses Central Park? That's kind of, that's where we're wanting to streamline the process, whereas, you know, Power Wagon, Kids' Day, the Homecoming pep rally, those types of things have street, the street blocked off, and there's not as many of those events. And we think that staff can put those out on the city calendar without missing one of them, without missing one of them and somebody saying, well, you missed my event. Whereas we have a lot of just general park use permits for things such as a rally or whatever, that doesn't necessarily use the speaker, so.
Yeah, then the Park and Rec can manage if there's two requests and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
You know, first come, first served.
Yes, and that's what we do now already.
Right?
That's why Matt came today, is to make sure that he gets his weekend in June.
Yeah.
And if, if this one's, if we want to get, send this to a committee to talk about it more, that's fine. Like I said, this is something that we, we're still working, we're working through improving the process, but we know that we are looking at it from our lens, so we can, we can take suggestions as we go, or look at it some more.
How are we going to people know whether to come here, or to go to Park and Rec, or will we take the application and move it over there, and then they will get back with the person that's requesting it?
So with, with Park and Rec's new website, they have online reservations for a lot of things. And so that's actually where this started, was we had an individual that went to Park and Rec, then they came here, and then they were sent back there, and they just, they got the runaround because staff didn't know everyone's process. And even just by talking through this between our staff and Park and Rec staff, we're making improvements already that we know this needs to go to Park and Rec. So if someone calls here, we were, we were working on a FAQ for staff as much as citizens to make sure that we are giving people, you know, okay, they want to use Central Park, you need to talk to so-and-so at Park and, at Park and Rec. To make sure, again, we're giving out consistent information.
I'd make a motion to approve Planning and Zoning Policy 2025-2.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve Planning and Zoning Policy 2025-2. Any other discussion? No, please call roll.
Kness?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Roe?
Yes.
Lornoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Approve unanimously.
Okay, before I go to the Christmas tree pickup, because that's very important, one other thing in my packet, as an FYI, because we have not had a P and Z or a BOA meeting for about six months. They, we have those meetings when they are needed. I haven't had an opportunity for the, the BOA and P and Z to approve this, so I'm showing this to you so that somebody other than my office sees this. We do a, we started this a couple years ago where there is a set deadline for applications for each of those, for BOA and, for Board of Adjustment and the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is generally three weeks before the meeting. This allows to make sure that we get the proper public notice for each of those meetings. And so that will be going up on the website. So actually, to get something, to get a rezoning done in January, it's already too late because of the council meetings that are required, and those are all listed on each of there. So lastly, very important, this came up last year, was someone asks me, why do you not pick up the Christmas trees out of an apartment building? I don't have a good answer, other than that's the way we've always done it. So Joe and I talked about it, and went, developed this last January, fine-tuned it the last couple weeks. So we, there are not a lot of people who have real Christmas trees anymore, so we are going towards any residential property, but the apartment buildings and trailer courts do need to designate a single spot for those to be picked up at. The rest of this policy is pretty much what, or is what we post each year, that they need to be void of paint, blocking stencil lights, stands, and all non-degradable or hazardous material. Talks about when we'll be picking them up. But this is, again, just putting into policy what we practice, but that way I have an answer for somebody when they says, where does it say that you don't pick up my tree at my business? Or that I have this in writing for somebody to answer that question. We're working on a brush pickup policy too, but that one I couldn't get done. So I am looking for approval of that.
Oh, okay, you want approval. Okay, so approval of our tree pickup policy.
Move to approve.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Kness. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, great. Yes, that's all. City administrator report.
By the time everybody gets to me, they're tired. The, I wanted to say that on November 13th, Rebecca and I went to one of probably many budgetary trainings to piggy off, piggyback off of John's remarks in regards to state laws. And the state dictates how municipalities not only receive funds, but how we spend them. A lot of people think that we have levies, we get the cash, and then we spend it however we decide to spend it. That's not how that works. That's just the general concept and form. So I did have a Southeast Iowa City Managers Meeting in Burlington last Friday, and again, our budgets are of great concern because they're trying to shrink, and we're talking about the rollbacks, state laws, consolidated levies that we currently have, and what that looks like in the near future. And as we compress, I'm a taxpayer, I don't like to pay taxes either, but I know that's how we function, and without them, we don't have a city. And that we also want to keep things as, as cost-effective as we possibly can for our citizens. And as, how we create or how we collect funds gets smaller and smaller, that means services change, and eventually we get down to essential services, and then we have to make some hard decisions, and what does that look like? So those conversations are coming, and I will, again, have these conversations over and over and over again. I will let you know, send you emails, we'll talk about it here, we'll talk about it in the budget proceedings. But it's just one of those things that makes us uncomfortable, but they're conversations we have to have. I also wanted to say, again, those services that people don't think about that actually cost money. I just wanted to say thank you to the Street Department, Beautification Commission for all the decorations downtown. We store those, those decorations, I don't know whether we purchase those, but we.
Chamber purchases.
Chamber purchases them, but we spend those funds. We, we have, the Street Department goes out, they organize them, they pull them out of storage, they put them up, they take them down, they re-inventory, and they repair them, all of those things. That's what we do, and I want to say thank you, but to everyone that's involved in that, and it's a lot of hard work, but those are the things that, that we pay for. So again, another thing that, that we're working on to go off of what Melanie was talking about is the water distribution. The Water Department came up with a unique idea of making a grid pattern across their sediment ponds to keep the, to get the geese to go somewhere else. I always thought it was wives' tale that that actually worked, so they've done it, and they're gone. So now this is an application because that's actually geese populations in certain areas.
What's a grid pattern? What do you mean?
It's a mesh that goes over the ponds that keeps the geese from coming in and makes them uncomfortable, and they go somewhere else. They don't like it. So then that's typically what happens, you take away the food source, you take away their comfort, you take away their homes, they go somewhere else. And we're just asking them to move on in a polite way. So we might be using this application elsewhere, it's inexpensive, so pretty happy about that. We'll see if it actually works over a period of time. Then lastly, as in tradition, we typically ask the council to allow our staff to go home at noon on Wednesday so that they can get ready for their fam, receiving their family on, on Thursday? Did I say Wednesday? And then for Thanksgiving on Thursday. And that will, most likely, we've got some weather coming in, so most likely there will be some street crews, they're prepping for snowfall this weekend, and they will be out awake. So we try to seize these moments, if that's, that's okay. And I said for questions.
Questions? Not, I would like a motion to adjourn to, our next meeting would be Monday, December 15th. We'll have, again, one meeting in December, that's December 15th, that's 7:00 PM, so I would take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Toohill?
Second.
Second by Kness.
Do we have to approve his request? Or is that?
We gave him authority to do that with, in his contract, I believe.
Okay.
Those days.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so all those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
That's who you're thinking of.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good Thanksgiving.